We will call this meeting the order. This is a committee of the whole meeting. At last Tuesday's council meeting, the resolution objecting to renaming State Route 562 was placed into this committee. And so in an effort to get this resolved, we called a meeting. We have before us a couple of other things. We have the original resolution. There is a resolution that was on our desks that -- oh, go ahead Ms. Allen. Thank you. My understanding is that Ms. Allen had asked the law department to draft on her behalf. And then there's a resolution or a paper proposed by Councilman Thornberry defining criteria for naming public rights of way buildings and spaces in Norwood. So I'll open the floor up to discussion.
Thank you, ma'am, President. Yes, I --
Oh, before we -- I did get an email -- I'm sorry. I got an email from Mr. Schenker indicating that he was not able to be here tonight. And I think Mr. Mumper indicated last Tuesday that he would not be here.
Okay.
I know those two were not coming. I had not heard anything. I think Mr. Whittington works on Thursday night. So he likely will not be here either.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have thrown that in. He made it clear to us that we would not be able to attend because of his work schedule. I mean, quite simply, my goal in this was to, in having this referred to the committee, was to not stop the -- there being a resolution objecting to the renaming, but some of the wording that was on it. The version that the law department has passed out that Ms. Allen worked with them on is -- I still am not -- I don't -- I'm interested in trying to defuse this, any potential reaction to this as much as possible, and would ask that the body would consider not actually mentioning what the name, proposed name was. And that's why I wrote the version I did, which basically just sets guidelines for criteria for naming public rights of way. In the discussions I had with just about everybody since last week, the main thing was, "Name this after somebody still in office." That was our lessons with the Michael A. Fox Highway up in Butler County tells us that. Like him or not, Pete Roseway was named that way before he became under a cloud. And so for some people, it's inappropriate. So my goal is to come out of this just with some language that suggests that we send to Representative or State Senator Kearney outlining what we feel are the criteria that should be used when proposing a name change. The effect of it would be to, if he would agree with it, would be for him to withdraw his request. So the net effect would be that we would not be renaming the Norwood, the Route 562. So that, I'd be open to considering some combination of these two. So that basically is my position at this point.
Comments, anyone? Yes.
Um, I --
It's pretty informal, so let me speak up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you're fine. Thanks. Yeah, I was just reading over the resolution I guess Ms. Allen suggested. I agree. The fourth paragraph, I guess, one, two, three, third paragraph that just mentions the name, I would agree with Mr. Thornberry on that if we could just nix that and just be as simple as possible and just state that we are in objection to renaming the highway. And then I like what Steve has here where he's talking about, you know, us being consulted before a name change would occur. I think the majority of the highway isn't within Norwood. I think it would only be right that we should have some sort of say in that, such is my opinion.
Certainly being consulted before.
Yeah.
And that's in your, the purpose.
It's in this --
It's in yours.
Right, yeah. There's lots of that in the --
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm fine with not naming it. I don't even know that I necessarily said, "Name it." I think it would just, Mr. Brown took it from kind of what was --
From the original?
Yeah. And I had told him some of the things that I wanted taken out, but I mean, I'm fine with that. For me, it does, I mean, I think the gist of it is make it simple. Say, "We want to have, we don't, you know, withdraw it. We want to be able to be consulted about it." And so those are some of the main points. And then also not having a sitting politician, because it just doesn't make sense. So I think, for me, as long as those things are in there, and from what I've talked to people, that seems to be most of what I've heard as well, I'm fine with that.
So I propose then, whereas that third, whereas currently reads, "Whereas Senate Bill 374 will rename State Route 562 as the Barack Obama Norwood Lateral." And if we could just amend that to say, "Whereas Senate Bill 374 will rename State Route 562," period, and strike the "as the Barack Obama." Because everything else, yeah, you know, it'd be good to be on record, as far as I'm concerned, that we are, we would like to be consulted on the name for our, for the road that is kind of, we've become identified with, what, you know, whether it was official or not.
So in an effort to try to find some consensus to get this passed, is everyone in agreement with that, that we would leave the third whereas to be, "Whereas Senate Bill 374 will rename State Route 562?" And it's your resolution. You're okay with --
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yes.
And every --
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess the only other part that I was a little hazy on is about the second, Section 2 says, "Council requests that the Senate not name State Route 562 after a sitting elected official, but rather it should be named after a former," oh, I'm sorry. It says a formal elected official or someone who had a positive affiliation. So it could be a former elected official, not just a forward --
Right. I think --
Norwood elected official.
He originally had it as just somewhat of positive affiliation. I guess my point was that I don't think we, at least when I've talked to folks, it doesn't necessarily matter if it's a politician as long as they're not sitting. And that, and the main thing is that there's some consensus in that Kearney or whoever approaches, you know, representatives of Norwood before they even put this onto the floor.
Okay. Well, I'm, personally, I'm good.
Yeah, I think so, too.
John?
I believe we agree, yes.
You're cool? Just make that move.
Is there, yeah, I'm getting some vibes from people in the audience. If you would like to come up, come up and speak in the microphone so that --
Whatever, microphone.
It's being recorded.
Video tape.
So it's helpful, so folks can hear what you have to say. As I said, this is pretty informal. That's why we like to have committee of the whole meetings, because they're way more, way less formal than council meetings.
Yes, I like this. Hello, hello.
Yes, you'll be on.
I was just wondering, why did Senator Kearney decide that this had to be named anything? I mean, what was, why? I just want to know why. I mean, did he just wake up one morning and say, "Oh, by golly, let's name this after President Obama?" I mean, it's been the Norwood Lateral, it's been 562, and it's worked well. And nobody's objected to it. So I'd like to know --
I've not spoken to Senator Kearney, has anyone?
I actually have. I mean, it's one of those political questions, or one of those questions that has kind of a political answer. Senator Kearney is of the same political party as President Obama and was a major supporter of President Obama in the previous two elections. And in fact, and he mentioned this to me, and it's not, it's not private information, he was the top fundraiser for President Obama in Ohio during the election. So also, he's term limited. This is his last few weeks in office. He can't run anymore because of term limits. And it's not unusual for politicians, when they get in that situation, to put forth recommendations like this. I'm sure he's a realist. He knows they have, we have a predominantly, seriously predominantly Republican Senate and House in Columbus, and he knows that this had little chance of passing. At the same time, he also, and this is public record, it was in the Enquirer article, he also proposed that the Cleveland Indians rename themselves as one of his final things.
And add 40 more days to the school year.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. That was the other one. I kept forgetting. Yeah, and basically make school a year-round thing, which, you know, some people have mentioned before. But that just gives you some context as to why these sorts of things happen. Politics and politicians are famous on both sides of the party for, I mean, that's, in essence, why we ended up with the Cross County Highway being named after President Reagan, who really had nothing to do with this area.
Right. I know. I woke up one day and found it Ronald Reagan. I thought, "Wow, when did that happen?" And, you know --
1998 or whatever it was. Yeah. So anyway, that's the best I can answer.
I believe Senator Kearney would probably do well to perhaps step back from this, because this is a volatile issue with a lot of people. And I believe what he wants may not be what the people want. And I, yes.
And I think that's the, that was the purpose of having the resolution drawn up to begin with, was to indicate that. So I think we're in agreement.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elected officials have a responsibility to represent their constituency. And it sounds like he wants to represent himself and perhaps the President. I don't know.
Well, in defense of Senator Kearney, he represents a much larger constituency than just Norwood.
Much, much larger.
Much, much larger.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Lynn?
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's just a point. Did you want to make a comment?
No, let Lynn talk.
Let her talk? Okay. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. I did contact Senator Kearney's office, both by email and by phone. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I said to him. I convey my opposition to renaming the Norwood Lateral with Senator Kearney, and I convey my opposition here and now to my city council. I believe Senator Kearney completely took our voice away. The voice of Norwood excluded us completely from his decision. I was born and raised here. I am fourth-generation Norwood. My grandparents and my great-grandparents had their house taken in a quick take to build that Norwood Lateral. I don't want the lateral politicized in any way, shape, or form. If there's a formal name change, let it be officially named the Norwood Lateral. Although everybody in the area, of course, knows it's the Norwood Lateral, that's not its official name. Norwood has become a city for other cities to model. We were ridiculed and have risen above that. We have made our mark by changing from an industrial complex to an office, medical office, and retail destination. This is primarily because of our location, location, location. And the Norwood Lateral has given us that location. And now the senator wants to take that from us? I'm urging you to give the citizens of Norwood our voice in this matter and send a resolution to say to Columbus, telling them no way to this name change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jump in. We don't need to raise your hand. It's a joy of a committee meeting.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I do agree with the way it's written here. I do not think it needs to be renamed, only name it Norwood Lateral. If you're going to name it for someone, then it should be someone who has given to this city. And that's Carl Linner. Look what he has done for, you know, Norwood. He was raised in Norwood. He started his business here in Norwood. UDF uses, I mean, is a prominent business here in Norwood. I was raised in Norwood. My brother was on city council. We have fought for Norwood. When GM left, my brother and Donna Knowles, they fought to get Norwood built back up, and we have. And it should be named Norwood Lateral, if anything. He has done nothing for Norwood that I could, that I could find. And the senator, I'm sorry, he is just trying to get something done before he leaves office. He wants a controversy, and that's what he's going to be getting, because it's not right. We should have the right to say, "What is named 562?" Is it named 562? Keep it that way. If not, then name it Norwood Lateral or the Carl Linner. It should not be named what he is proposing.
Come on up.
I agree with your resolution. But the name, I think, represents our city and Carl Linner. The Carl Linner Norwood Lateral would be beautiful. That would show that we cared about somebody that grew up in our town, gave to the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton, Cameron. And I appreciate you guys being here. I knew half of them weren't going to show up anyway, because, face it, it's all political. You know what I'm saying? But I love Norwood. I grew up here. My family grew up here. My great-grandfather was mayor of Norwood, Charles F. Howard Jones. And I'll fight tooth and nail for this. We're going up to Columbus with petition. We have a lot of signatures. And I'm so happy that you all showed up tonight. Please pass what you got. Send it to them. Keep firing off the letters, the emails. Call the senators. They will write you back. But the name I love the best, the Carl Linner Norwood Lateral. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys.
Yes.
Just for point, what I would ask, because I know, I mean, it sounds like we're in agreement on some of it.
Yeah, sounds like it.
So that if we could, I don't know in terms of procedure, but making sure Chris gets this changed so that it can go on Tuesday, so that we can do an emergency resolution?
Absolutely.
So I don't know. I'm asking you, is that something that you would then give to him?
I can make that, a copy of our committee report, in our committee report and leave that.
And then just ask that it be there and then have it be an emergency?
That we ask that these changes be made and that we add a Section 5 that it's hereby declared to be an emergency.
Yeah.
And then we will put it on Tuesday's agenda.
Yeah. If ever, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Agreed.
Anything else out there want to speak? Margaret? Have a --
I wasn't going to say anything because everybody has been very good in giving it, well, I would say, too, except now. I can't understand why, when it's the naming. We are coming up to change something that we have here just because of the name. We're going to put something else real fast that we haven't given any thought to. We're going to put ourselves in, we can't do anything else just because of this.
Why?
I don't think you do that for any one person. This is not, this is not what I want. The question before us now is what this guy has, man has given us up there in Columbus is, he wants us to change the name. There's nothing, that's all the question is. Well, we're not coming up and saying, "Well, because we are, we're going to fix it so we can't do anything else with anything else." We don't know what the future is going to be. I mean, I put ourselves, it's very simple. The question before us is, do we want to change the name because one individual up there in Columbus wants to change the name? President Obama is having a lot of things named after him now. My gosh, trying to change the Norwood Lateral, which is giving us the loca, as we said, she said, "Location, location, location." Yes, that has done a lot for us. Everybody says, when they say, "Well, where is everything?" On the Norwood Lateral. On the Norwood Lateral. When our people say, "It'll be Obama." President Obama's going to have a lot, he's having a lot of things named after him now. I mean, he's got the President. He's also got a healthcare name. You need to tell me a lateral? Is that important to have, to have for that? Especially in a city the size of Norwood. We are a little, a small city, which we have done a lot with, and we're in the process of doing quite a bit of more. We've developed up over there because people say, "Where is it?" On the Norwood Lateral. Nor, locate, as I said, location has done so much for us. Why, why can't this gentleman find something else someplace he wants to name after, after? Because we happen to be, he's got his replacement here, his replacement one in this war. I mean, so I can't, I can't see us changing everything and putting something down here. I don't know if this has gone through our legal department. I don't know if this has gone through --
Margaret was drafted by Chris Brown. Sarah Allen had asked him to do a draft. My understanding is there was consultation today. Mr. Brown did draft that.
Yeah, the longer one that says "draft." I threw the shorter one in.
So Mr. Brown did this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this is coming up at our council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We have the opportunity at the council meeting to voice our pros or cons on this, too. Because we are the people, we're the city of Norwood.
That's what we did.
We're the people living in Norwood.
Yeah, just for anybody here, too, if you want to come to the council meeting.
Yeah, this is a discussion right now.
That's right.
We have a protocol. We're signing up to speak to council. You did it last time.
You can't make the decision for that.
What we are deciding tonight is the wording of a proposal, of a proposed resolution that will be placed on the agenda at the next council meeting and then would be officially considered.
And I guess, I don't know who made the decision, who's decided that in order, what we're, this, is this our legal department decided that instead of coming up and having it just about the name, we're going to do this and change the way we do things, we name things?
I don't quite understand the question. I know that there was discussion. And Ms. Allen, you can paraphrase.
Well, I'm not sure, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm unclear.
Who came up with the idea for this?
The initial resolution?
Yes. Who came up with this?
The initial? The initial resolution was requested by the mayor of the law department. The law department --
This one right here?
No. Then the resolution that was placed on council's agenda on the Fourth.
Yes.
That one was proposed by the mayor, written by the law department.
Yeah, that's what it was.
At that council meeting, this resolution, that original resolution, was placed into the committee of the whole, which we are discussing tonight.
Oh, this is the one that Mr. Mumper came up with?
No.
No.
He read it.
He read it.
He read it.
He read it out loud into the record last Tuesday.
He read it because he wanted to say that he had no objection to the wording in it. And so he read it into the minutes.
Sorry, I still --
And then, now at the meeting tonight, there are two additional things. One that was proposed by Mr. Thornberry that he drew up on his own. The other resolution with, that says draft on it, was a resolution that was taken from the original resolution with some things taken out and other things added that Ms. Allen had expressed concern about, that communities have no input, that she objected to that, rightly so. As we are saying, we are objecting because we have no, we had no input into it. So that was added into this draft resolution.
That was added in this resolution that does include community inputs. That's why it's changed. We changed it.
Ms. Whitmer, this is our discussion. Is there something specifically that you have an issue with in that new resolution?
In the new draft?
If there is, we can discuss it. This is our discussion forum right here. So --
My discussion, no, I like to know. Well, my thing is, why in the world? The question to me is, Mr. Kearney, he wants the city, he wants to rename it. That's the only thing we would discuss it.
And we're objecting.
Now, I'm trying to get the reason why we don't want to do this in the future. Now, I don't know, we didn't have this in effect when he came and suggested this. He's going to say you didn't have it.
Well, can I just --
You're coming up with something now.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I've heard from a lot of people, this resolution is just us objecting to the name change. We do not have the authority to rename a highway. That's what he was proposing up in Columbus. So this, this resolution is us objecting to that name change, as well as stating that we would prefer that you would come to us and contact us should this ever be another consideration for a name change be made, is that you come to us and ask for our input, the city's input, because that was not done in the first place. He just, you know, came out with this bill, this potential bill, with no input from us or from the city. Yeah, so this, I think, what I like about this is that we're asking them to come to us because we cannot make a name change ourselves. Does that make sense?
Well, he's not asking, he's just going to tell you, and then, will you agree or not?
Well, we don't get a say, really, though. What we're doing is just issuing our objection. We don't really have a vote in whether or not the change happens. So this is the best that we can do at this point, to issue our opinion on this.
So all we can say is, yes, if we do this way, you know, it's not going to make any --
Well, like I said, this is, this is the only sort of recourse that we have at this point, besides, like, I know many of us have emailed and called. That's really all the, the sort of power that we have in this situation.
That's kind of sad.
It is, but --
Then if we're saying this, I don't know who named it Norwood Lateral. Do you?
It's not, it's just a nickname.
It's not officially named Norwood Lateral.
It's nicknamed the Norwood Lateral.
Everybody says it.
Well, it's just not, it's not official. I agree with you.
It's contractual, not distributive.
No one else calls, they do it all the time, the Norwood Lateral. So, well, I don't know, but it seems to be --
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
My name's James Ponsel, 4536 Forest Avenue, Forest, Norwood, Ohio. Yeah, so everybody's already said great things. You know, all I want to say is I liked the original resolution where it called for even removing the limited access highway and putting in a surface boulevard to kind of increase connectivity. I don't know who came up with that, but I thought it was a great idea. I think it's probably better for it not to be included in the resolution, so I'm not opposed to that being removed from it. But just something to consider, I just want to say I did like that original language, and I thought it would, that would personally be a great idea. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I do think, I'm not 100%, but I think Chris Brown, who does have a planning background, came up with that.
Assistant law director.
The assistant law director, so. And I do think it is a good idea. I think we took it out just because it, like we were saying, maybe muddies the water and just make it simple. But I think it's something definitely to, like, think about and have more discussions about and figure out if, how do we sit down with the state and talk about those possibilities? So thank you for, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they did it in Seattle, or no, Port. They took, they took an expressway that ran along the riverfront in Portland and took it out.
Wow.
Turned it into a park.
Nice. All right, so as I understand, what we have agreed on was that the third whereas would simply read, "Whereas Senate Bill 374 will rename State Route 562, semicolon, and whereas there was no opportunity," I want to see if you, because we indicated that we wanted to make this an emergency resolution, so perhaps we need to add a Section 5. This resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency resolution and will go into effect as soon as possible. The reason for said emergency is the necessity to proceed forthwith in stating our objection. Everyone agree to that language?
There you go.
Okay. If, with that being said, I think we've come to an agreement. So I have the following committee report that I will propose, if you all are willing to sign this, that we, your committee of the whole, to whom was referred, "Resolution Objecting to Renaming State Route 562," that we would report this. That members in attendance agree that the resolution before you tonight, which will be on Tuesday's agenda, as drafted by Sarah Allen and Chris Brown, with changes made during the committee of the whole meeting, be placed on the agenda for the 11-11-14 council meeting, and we recommend passage at that meeting.
Yes. I vote yes.
All right. I believe that our business here is closed. Thank you. If you'll come up and sign the committee of the whole report.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.